Okay, is everyone ready?
Yes, sir.
Have we done it?
Oh, yeah.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it's kept that secret, he'll tell us tonight. Everybody ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 6th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone here. I'd like to, at this time, ask Councilman Walter Kimball to have our prayer, after which we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Councilman Kimball.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dear Lord, we humbly ask your blessing for this new year, 2015. We ask your guidance that you endow each of us with the wisdom, the understanding, and the compassion to do your work for the people of this great city. We ask your blessing on this, the greatest country in the world, as we deal with a number of issues facing our country, particularly in the area of law enforcement and race relations. And in closing, we ask your blessing on the beloved families and the New York police officers Ramos and Lou, who we recently lost in a tragic attack which has shook our nation. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I think we might also, since our last meeting, one in particular that we think of is maybe the family of Mr. Albert Myers. You know, I don't know too many colleges around the state that doesn't have a Myers Center. The VAR, I want to say, and there was a Myers Center. I didn't have to ask too many questions on that one. But anyway, he was certainly a leader in the community and lived a long life. So, we certainly will miss him. The adoption of the agenda, item C, is there a motion?
A minute.
Is there a second?
Second here, sir.
Okay, sir. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Item D is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of December the 2nd, 2014. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, item E is public expression. Each person is limited to a total of five-minute speaking time. Just, of course, no questions answered, just listen for five minutes and we'll go from there. I have one person that signed up, is former Councilman Dale Burkett, 601 Tryon Place. Councilman, welcome. Good to see you.
Early this afternoon, I was called, I guess I need to tell you who I am, Dale Burkett, in 601 Tryon Place. Early this afternoon, I'd been called by the city and told me that you were going to have something on the agenda tonight. It wasn't going to be on the agenda, but it was going to be mentioned later in our report. That interests me, so there's some information on that I want to share with you and, because you may not would know it at that time. But there was a piece of property that the council put on surplus, and then it was bid on in the last month or so. But at the 10th day, I bid on the property. I upset the bid from whoever the real estate person was who had it, not knowing who he was or no interest of it or anything, but the piece of property had some interest to me. So when I was called today and said that it would probably be suggested later to remove that and take it off of the surplus, I thought I'd come and share with y'all. From my perspective, if I had not bid on the 10th day, then that individual would already have the property. So what I'm asking y'all is just have a good discussion on it. It is a piece of property that is split by railroad track, and it does not matter to me that it is split by railroad track. There's two little slivers of land. The total of it is less than a half acre, but some of it's on one side of the track, some's on the other side of the track. But what I'd ask of the council is, when you get to that point, when it's brought up or is mentioned, and when y'all discuss it, just go with what the ballgame had. I mean, you had it for sale, someone bid on it, and then at the last minute, I upset it. I'd hate for it to look like, hey, I don't know who's got the bid now, and if it's been upset since I bid it. I was just called today and it was mentioned that it would be brought up tonight to put it back into city property. And then I'm going to stay around later for it to be brought up and when it's discussed. I don't know if it'd be appropriate, but I'd have some questions about it or I don't know why it would come to that. But I wanted y'all to know that part of it before it came up. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dale. Okay, regular agenda. Item 1 is an order to demolish 1407 Holly Leaf Avenue. A, Edward?
Second.
Second.
I'll see. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? What's on tonight? Okay. Item 2 is the final recording plan of Village at Parkside, Phase 2, Map 2, Mr. Rusty Boss, city engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. The developers of the Village at Parkside have submitted a final recording map for Phase 2, Map 2 of this section. This will add an additional 12 lots to the lots that are out there. This is, this bring a total of 82 lots to a maximum of 253 lots in that subdivision. The public infrastructure is in place, the streets are out there, the water and sewer are out there. They've all been inspected and they're up to, still current up to city standard. We recommend approval of this recording plan, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Mr. Boss?
Yes, sir. Rusty, no questions about this particular, I'm in favor of recording that, but I was out at Parkside, looked at the model that Eastwood had built. Eastwood's currently building on these lots and ran into the owner and asked him when they were going to complete that street. The, I don't know how you, Schindley, is that how you pronounce that?
Right.
Because I think these lots are just the upper portion up there. And I asked him how many lots were in there and when they were going to complete that, and he said, "There's about 40 lots." I said, "Well, when are you going to build?" And he said, "We could build on probably now." And he said that it was the city that told him he could not record those 40 lots. Why, why is that? Why are we preventing lots from being recorded?
I'm not certain I wasn't a part of that conversation. I'll find an answer out there, but it would, usually we do these at the request of the developers, and it's usually predicated on them having all their infrastructure in place.
Yeah, and this, I mean, I drove the street. The infrastructure is definitely there. And he said he wanted to record all the lots, but the city told him, "No, only do that many." And to me, that's a little foolish, because that would be putting all these lots on the tax roll as an individual lot, and I don't see the reasoning behind that.
I'm not certain either, but I will find out for you.
Yeah.
I apologize, I don't have a better answer than that, but like I said, I wasn't part of that conversation, but I'll get you an answer.
Okay. I would appreciate that, because it confused me. He asked me what the reasoning was, and I told him I had no clue, so.
He'll follow up on that. And is there a motion to prove, I think, 12, the 12 lots that are here in the budget? On the agenda? Is there a second? All right, discussion anymore? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you very much, thank you, Rusty. Rusty, also is a traffic ordinance, speed limit reduction on Kenmere Drive. Item 3.
So, this is a speed limit reduction for a portion of Kendrick Drive that's already, city street been accepted for street houses, people are out there living. It's post, it's not posted, it's 35 miles an hour like any other street in Gastonia. Residents are requesting it to be reduced to 25 miles an hour. This is anticipation of another request for speed humps to come, come in and be installed in that portion of Kenmere Drive. Just as a point of information, I guess, as the next section across the creek from this one develops out, we worked with the developer to have them put the speed humps in. So essentially, this one long road will have speed humps in all the way from beginning to end. This, this road is just a very long road. It's, it's going to get speed humps. So we figured we'd get on the front end of this one with the developer and have them help us.
It's really the first time the developers have put speed humps in on the front end.
That's nice.
Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Rusty, my understanding would be then, if I'm correct, the developer would be absorbing the cost of the speed bumps?
On his side of the creek, yes, sir. For that portion of the construction.
And secondly, do we have any speed analysis for the other side?
Not yet, no, sir, we don't. I think we're absolutely going to have to get that when it requests, and then we'll have to put the counters out and collect that data and take a look at it. I feel certain, just looking at the street itself from our years of the speed hump program, if this one doesn't qualify, none of them do.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. All right. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 4 is the monthly financial report for November. Melody Braddy, Director of Financial Services.
Good evening. Tonight, I present to you the monthly financial report for November 2014. Most of our funds are operating as budgeted, except for the electric fund, and I'll speak to that in just a few minutes. If you look on page 3 of the general fund, the general fund revenues, I mean expenditures exceed revenues by $3,024,605. This is very normal for this time of year. Most of our, our biggest revenue, our property tax revenue, most of that comes in during December and January. In the property tax category, we do exceed expectations through the month of November by $464,000. On page 4 of the general fund, the chart at the bottom, currently your general fund is $1,049,941 above our five-year average for the month of November. Are there any questions on the general fund?
Questions, Melody? Anyone?
Page 5 is the electric fund. Electric revenues exceed expenditures by $421,466. As you can see on the electric collections category, we are currently $551,000 below expectations in our biggest revenue in this fund. And on the expenditure side, the purchases for resale, which is our purchase power, we are about $400,000 above where we were this time last year in that category. If you turn to page 6, currently your electric fund is $2,281,000 below our five-year average. And that has caused some concern from staff, and we are in the, we're analyzing that and researching it right now. We have a meeting internally with staff set up for Thursday to discuss. And then we have reached out to the power agency, to electric cities, to help us analyze our rates as far as our wholesale rate versus the retail rate to make sure that we're consistent in how we are, we're charging our electric rates. But right now, your electric fund looks as if it will not meet budget.
And the concern we have is, we have 21 different retail rates, and there's also a demand charge and an energy charge, and there are seasonal fluctuations with regard to how we're charged from electric cities. What the cities tried to do the last few years is simply pass on the wholesale rate through our retail rate. Now what is concerning us is that should have us even. But we noticed at the end of last year, and then now this year, that that's not even, it's dividing like that. So that means that there's something that's not, or at least it appears to us that there's not something right between how our retail rates are arranged and how those things are dealt with with regard to how we're being charged on the wholesale side. So we're, this is the month of January, this is where we're, that's where our focus is to try to get the answer. So we will fix it, but we got to figure out why, you know, why it's working the way it's working.
Yes, sir.
Does it have anything to do with the 7% tax that's on there and...?
It shouldn't. No, we, because this is the rate itself.
Right.
But didn't that lower down the wholesale rate itself? Isn't that what they claimed?
It did, but then you would think then that would be benefiting.
Right.
But it's actually going the other way. And see, that's why it's, doesn't make sense exactly. But one of the values of the monthly financial report, we started this thing 15 years ago or more, is that we track things. And we start to see, and we ask a question, we say, "Well, maybe that's weather-related," and we'll take a look at it. And once you start to see, and something like this in particular is a problem, it appears to be a problem. So we're going to get on that, but we wanted to share that with the council and let you know what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Does it have, at your first glance here, does it have anything to do with the falling off of retailer wholesale customers?
You know, it might. I know when we talked with the, the power agency, the head of the power agency, he was speculating that there might be a differential in the summer, the summer rates, that we may not, there are some demand charges that maybe we're not capturing all of those. And that, that might be it, and you're, but we just don't know at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Melody?
Page 7 is the water and sewer fund. Water and sewer revenues exceed expenditures by $2,157,233. And on page 8 of the water and sewer fund, currently your water and sewer fund is $253,482 above the five-year average. Page 9 is the stormwater fund. Stormwater revenues exceed expenditures by $56,664. And on page 10, your stormwater fund is currently $23,337 below your five-year average, so really tracking flat. Page 11 is the solid waste fund. Solid waste revenues exceed expenditures by $220,146. And your solid waste fund is only three years old, so that we're currently $2,656 above that three-year average. Page 13 is the transit fund. Transit fund expenditures exceed revenues by $375,313. We currently have October, yeah, October and November grant reimbursement requests outstanding of about $181,000 in the transit fund. And on page 14, transit is $55,776 below the five-year average. Page 15 is your operating budget summary, and currently, we have spent 40.17% of our operating budget through 41.7% of the fiscal year. Are there any questions?
Questions, Melody? Mr. Craig and Pierceall.
Melody, I only have one question. I want to go back to the stormwater fund on page 4-10.
Yes.
When did we implement the new stormwater fees?
That was last year.
What?
It started, it was, it was passed last year, but it was effective in July.
Okay, so that's where some of this is, the revenue?
Yes.
Now, we've increased the revenue, but the expenses have also increased. Is that because we've done some of the projects that were on the books to do then?
We are transferring more money out of the operating fund to the project fund to do more projects.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and mine, right along with hers.
That, that was what I thought, what I heard, but you said that we're below the five-year average? We've increased the rate, so how are we below the five-year average? Are we not collecting?
We also increased our budget. When we increased the rate, we anticipated increased revenues and...
Okay, so it's the whole budget, not just revenues?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Craig, if you recall, I guess it was what, Rusty, I'm going to fall back to you for a second. I think it was what, only about a month, month and a half ago, we finished our first cooperative project over off of Pamela and that whole stretch there. Am I correct, Rusty, I believe that was our first one? And we have some other ones that were on there, but there were a number of expenditures there. And at that time, that was a approximately 12-year-old project that we finally completed. So that's where we're seeing actually some of that, if I'm correct, some of those expenditures, more or less, we're playing catch-up.
Well, I mean, excuse me, but that was my, that was my point, is that, that we're able to get some of those old projects off of the books now because we did have the rate increase.
Yeah, and that was the first one that was completed. And I think there's what, there's two or three other ones scheduled this year, Rusty?
Yes, sir. There's a couple, you know, the list.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for that report, Melody. Okay, item 5 focuses the fence of Gastonia Optimus Club Park. Mr. Mun?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, at the December 2nd meeting, we had a discussion at, kind of impromptu at the end of the council meeting regarding, you know, the possibility of locating a fence on the southern side of the Optimus Club park. Wanted to have all the councils see exactly where the location of that fence would be. That's an attachment here, and also what that fence would look like. Also, in our memorandum, we show that the cost would be about $4,900. I had someone ask, "Well, what if we did it with a black chain link fence?" That would be more like $3,200, something along those lines. And so that is the, what was being discussed. Whether we put fences at parks, we do sometimes, and we don't others. When you go to our parks or any other parks, you'll see fences around particularly ballfields, particularly around areas where you have small children to delineate where the play areas are. Sometimes we don't have fences, we'll use the, you know, just landscaping. So when the project was designed, it was landscaping along both sides, but on the northern side, there was actually a homeowner that had, already had their fence on that side. It's a chain link fence. We just left that in place and put plannings. So now here is the opportunity here, and I know there's a difference of opinion on city council, just to see which direction the council wanted to go. We can put the fence up or not put the fence up.
Any questions, Mr. Mun, Mr. Pierceall?
Where, where did the $3,200 figure come from for the black chain link fence?
Today, just, I asked Rusty about how much, if we did a chain link fence, what that would, what that would cost. It's about 2/3 of the cost of a, of a regular fence.
And Rusty, it would be that much?
Yes, sir, we didn't, we didn't have time to get quotes on that. That's just historic data from previous projects that we did.
And who does it? Do we hire a company or is the city capable of putting that?
Usually hire, yeah, usually one of the fence companies. And then we would also, if we did, we'd use black, you know, the black coated, coated ones.
And that's not something, we have city crews that can put up that fence?
For fencing. I don't think we do fencing, do we? No, no, it's, we, one of the local fence companies. We just bid it.
Questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to make a little statement on this, that one of the things that I think that kind of opened my eyes a little bit was some of the research I did. And one of the concepts that is generally used throughout the country, it's called SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And one of the cornerstones of that, there's four actually, but one of them is territoriality. And that's specifically what Mr. Mun was talking about with as far as delineating, you know, where a property line is, and particularly when we're dealing with, with younger children, that it can be something that it's, it can be a positive for the, the safety factors of the children, especially when they're, the target audience is younger. So it was one of the things that I looked at when considering this.
Yes, sir.
Just general comments, you know, I walked over the property today just to kind of really get a better understanding of this. And this, this fence would truly not keep anybody in. It truly would not keep anybody out. I agree with Councilman Kimball, it would delineate a property line. But that's about all it would do, so I'm not, I'm not really sure what it accomplishes, except for the fact that, you know, it's, it's in a portion of the park that is away from the play area, but it's in an area where obviously there will be activity. And the original impetus for this request was what? Historically going back to...
Property owner had requests.
The church? And the concern was?
The expense.
No, no, the concern to them was?
Oh, as far as I know, it was that the people trespass.
Yeah, from what I understand, that there would be people at the park or people that have, you know, would, would go onto their property when the church isn't, when the property's not in use. And that people would just roam from the park and go over into their property. And so they just want a delineation between their property and the park's property.
So they have to go through the bushes, they have to go down through the drainage ditch. Okay, I can understand going after a loose ball. But, you know, I think I'd take the sidewalk, to tell you the truth, if I wanted to go to their property, rather than, you know, go through the grass, go through the drainage ditch and all. I mean, if we wanted to delineate the property, I think that's fine, and you should do a chain link fence. Okay, but I wouldn't spend $5,000 for a fancy fence down that side. I'd put a little piece of, you know, decorative aluminum on the front to finish off the front, and then I'd use a chain link down the side. And if that makes sense to delineate the property, then let's vote for that. Okay, but I'm not going to sit here and think that anybody's going to get, you know, in or out as a result of that fence, because it just, it's not a contained property, you know?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is that your motion?
I'd love to make that.
I will second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to...
The motion, the motion is to extend the existing fence across the front of the property with the same character and material that's currently present as illustrated in Exhibit 5-3, and then extend the chain link down as delineated in Exhibit 5-2 on the property line with the church.
You want to cap it?
Cap it.
You want to put a, a figure of a...
Well, I think, you know, that, we know that the cap is 4,900 based on a decorative aluminum fence, and we know that it's something less than that for a chain link, so I assume it's going to be something less than $4,900. And we would use the normal bid process to, to job it out.
But I think, do you have a comfort level at it at 3,200? I mean... We, when I talked to Rusty, we went, we went like that. And if you're going to have the metal, you know, the vertical slats on the front, you know, that'd be a little more expensive when you make that turn. And so it depends upon, I mean, we just would get a couple, we'd get quotes from different fence companies, and then to see, you know, where the, where the, where the final bid would lie. But it's, it's approximation. I mean, I think, right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a fence, by putting it up here, is going to allow the people to realize that the parking facility is down the road, because they're not going to be able to park their vehicle and just walk right up to the park. The other thing is, Councilman Kimball was saying, safety factor. I look at it, I know Dave, you say, you know, fence is not a containment, but I look at it as more containment in terms of someone just driving up here, getting out of their car, running up, grabbing a kid, and running back in. I mean, it's a safety factor. I mean, it's a safety factor. And one of the questions I had for Ash is, are we liable if we do not have a fence here?
No, sir, no, sir.
Because I just think that a lot of little kids play here. And I just think by keeping them in bounds, where they like to run, they'll probably run up to the fence and run back to their swings and that type of thing, instead of just having a full rein. I just think it just makes sense in order to, to put the fence there, because the church is complaining that kids are going onto their property. And the church was there first, and the city came second. And we're kind of imposing on them, on their property rights. So I think by putting up a fence, will stop that and allow us to take action. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Craig?
I agree, Jim, and Walt, that, that they are, you know, if we can delineate that piece of property, then it would be a good thing long-term, okay? Would there, if, if we're talking about maybe a thirty-two, a cap of thirty-two hundred dollars, would that be something that maybe we wanted to put in the motion as, as a cap? Because we could probably cap it at forty-nine, but then if we're gonna cap it at forty-nine, we might as well do the, the fancy detailed, pretty one, okay? And, and chain length will, chain link will be pretty, the black chain-link will be fine there. That's what's on the other part, it's not black, it's just the regular chain-link. So if we could put a cap to it, I think, then that would give the staff a little bit more direction as to where that, that fine line might be. Would that be something?
Yeah, the, the thirty-two is strictly a two-thirds of the forty-nine, and even the forty-nine is an estimate. And that front section, if you wanna do that vertical, that will increase the price a little bit, so it may end up being, you know, thirty-four hundred or something like that. I, I, you know, we, it's exactly where that number falls, it's just hard to say right now.
And, and where would that, where would that thirty-five, thirty-nine, where would that come from?
Recreation budget.
So it's coming out of recreation budget, okay.
Good. Thank you, Your Honor. Could I request a, Dave, an amended motion to approximately thirty-seven hundred dollars? I, I think that might be able to cap it. You know, I, I think that's more, it gives you a little bit of, gives you an additional five hundred. What do you think? I mean, I see, it seems like.
I don't understand why you guys can't let staff just do their job, you know? I mean, city manager, he's not gonna approve, you know, some crazy bid for some exorbitant amount of money. I mean, guys are, you know, we're, we're working with estimates to start. And now you wanna, you know, have some cap on an estimate. You, you, you're working with unknowns. If, if that makes everybody feel better, I don't care, you know? You wanna make it thirty-seven hundred, that's fine, but I just think it's silly. I amended my motion, it's thirty-seven hundred, going once, going twice.
All right, there's, you second to the, to the, you second the motion, you wanna amend?
I mean, that's fine, I, I kinda agree with Dave. I mean, we're working on estimates, this, we told him we want black chain-link, let's let them get a black chain-link and go for it. If they can get it done for a thousand, great.
Guess if it, if it's over thirty-seven hundred, it's gotta come back for our approval.
Exactly, so, like, let's just let them do black chain-link.
There's a motion and a second with a, with a limit. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Oppose? It's anonymous. It's you now. Okay, thank you. Item six is a budget schedule for fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Mr. Munn?
Attached is the budget schedule, and if you notice, the, the next significant date is gonna be February the seventh. That's when we have our strategic planning meeting. We can have it here at City Hall upstairs. We're actually gonna be improving some of the audiovisual up there. If you wanna have it there, we also can have it at the conference center. So those are our two choices. It does cost us a little when we go to the conference center, or, or else if we don't do it, then we'll give them more of a deficit. So whatever, however we wanna play that game. So we, we, we do it, we, we can have it right here, or we can have it at the conference center. If it's here, it's easier, we can do it on Saturday. And then we'll, what, we've been able to come up with, with, with some ideas about what we'll be talking about. The front end will be about, you know, our financial situation. We'll give you very specific information, as much as we have about where we are in our, our finances. Also, what the impact of the revale is. We'll talk about the, the water and sewer, and the, the plan to do the funding for the, the water plant. The, the electric issue, we'll be dealing with that issue. And also, by then, Electric Cities will have given us the information about next year's rates, and, and doing some projections there. So we'll, the front end of this will be financial. Another piece that the council talked about was the, the group that was, the Alliance for Growth came forward with a proposal, you know, where the, they looked at six different categories of, of, of areas that, that the county and, and all the municipalities and the private sector should all be focused on to, to, to increase economic development. And this, I think was suggested by somebody that this would be an appropriate time to go through that. We, we have that report, we'll break that down. And there's a lot of it, there's one, there's one whole section that talks about education. Well, we're really not in the education business, so I think we don't really have to spend a lot of time there. But when we talk about whether it's infrastructure, regulatory issues, things like that, those are issues where we really are engaged, very much so. And so what we could do is kind of break that apart and, and use some of that, that day to take a look at it and, and, and talk about, you know, how we will work together with these other partners to, to move forward. What we've always said to this group and previous groups over the last forty years or so, that every time someone wants to pull together for better economic development for the city of Gastonia and Gaston County, you can count on Gastonia always being there. We always are, we're the utility provider, we're the county seat, we're the, we're the biggest city in the county, and we're all about economic development. So anyway, that, that would be a piece. And then the, the, the final one would be all, all the different projects and, and issues that we have. If you have a particular issue or concern tonight, or all the way up to the next city council meeting. Next city council meeting, we'll, we'll put together an agenda so you can see the whole prior, actually, we'll send it out with, with the agenda. So a week before our next city council meeting, next week, we'll give you an idea of what, what's on there. And if you see something else that you'd like to talk about, you know, please let us know, and we can add that. And we're thinking it would be a day long, around eight-thirty in the morning till about four, like we did before. Depend upon how, how well we progress. And if, and, and so, this, this is the agenda notice. What's also listed in, in yellow, or highlighted in yellow here are the, some future dates, in terms of, there's a budget outlook, and then there's also the budget work sessions themselves. And, and so if you could look at your calendars, and, and we'll, we, perhaps at the February 7th meeting, is actually start to look at some of those dates.
Okay, questions? Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to suggest putting transportation issues on, with our budget session, not our budget session, our work session on the seventh, because with this Alliance for Growth, transportation in all different categories seems to be a, a common thread as to how we're gonna connect all this stuff. And since we're transportation, then I, I just see that as a major component to the, to the big picture. So, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Smith? On that, you got it?
That's all.
All right. David, what was the, the first time that you said, I didn't hear you, that, what, what are you predicting that it would start? Usually eight-thirty, or?
What we did last year is that we actually said, set breakfast at eight and started at eight-thirty. But this is our meeting, it's your, it's your meeting. What's a comfortable time? Do you wanna start at nine and have, kind of, just have a little breakfast at eight-thirty? What's, what's a convenient time for the council? On a Saturday morning when everybody likes to sleep.
And end at one. We'll just go through that one fast. Will, will, I personally feel like that upstairs is, can save a dollar or two, that would be good. I don't know about anyone else, but. There's parking, and there's everything we need.
Is the time eight, eight-thirty, is that, is there not?
Well, you know, we can eat and talk, eight-thirty would be, we could just start anytime you wanted to after that.
Okay.
Okay. We'll get back on that. City Attorney's Report, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, this does relate to former Councilman Burkett's address during public address. And Jason, I did put a, a, a thing on the Elmo, if you wanna show it. This is the property at the corner of, of Long and Broad. It is currently in the upset bid process. Mr. Bob Wisnig came and made an offer of about five thousand dollars. And you will recall, at the Facilities Management Committee meeting, I specifically asked him, you know, had he been in contact with anyone at the railroad? And he could not yet give us a name of anybody that he had dealt with. But the committee went forward with the recommendation, it was advertised. Mr. Burkett did upset the bid on the twenty-ninth of December. It is currently re-advertised, that period will end on January twelfth. There have not been any other upset bids yet. A private citizen, Mr. Don Barclay, had contacted several of you all and insisted that the city did own this right of way because of the Rails to Trails agreement. Mr. Bombardier and several of the staff members and I got a plethora of maps and deeds from several decades out. Mr. Bombardier put together a map that's upstairs in the law library. We do not think that this is part of the Rails to Trails. The railroad has not deeded it to us, so it is eligible for upset bid. But in looking through all of those documents, I was of the opinion that it will be very difficult to get the railroad to release that, because I think they will have to go back to the Surface Transportation Board to do that. And they may not want to do that, they may not want to spend the money to do that. And I was concerned that whoever purchases those two remnants would then come back to the city and say, you should take this property back and give me my money back. Mr. Wisnig, of course, wanted to combine it all and build a restaurant, is what he told the Facilities Committee. You've heard Mr. Burkett say he doesn't, he doesn't need the right of way. But at any rate, I just thought that after checking all those documents, that I would bring it back to you with my recommendation that you reject all the bids and take it off the surplus property list. But if the council does not do anything, it is still being advertised, and the period will end on the twelfth. And if there's another upset bid, we'll just keep advertising it until it sells. So that's where we are, questions? You can take that down, Jason, thank you.
Okay, I, I know for a fact, Mr. Wisnig has been made very aware that we do not own that.
Yes, sir, I called him again today. I, I thought I should let Mr. Burkett know what my recommendation was gonna be, because he's an interested party at this point. That's why I called him today. I called Mr. Wisnig again today and made him aware of what was going on. And he was wanting to know what the procedures for upset bid were, so he's still interested.
Right, we, we discussed that at committee, council, and Mr. Burkett has indicated that if you can't get that railroad right of way, you're, you're aware that you may not get it, that you may be buying just the two small parcels, correct? And that you may never get that railroad right of way? Okay, so as long as both parties know, and my only advice would be if another upset bid were to come in that's not one of these two parties, that they be made very aware that you're buying these two small parcels, the city is not involved in getting you this right of way, that's between you and the railroad when you buy it. I mean, we just need to be clear about that, and I, I don't have any reservations after that. I mean, I, I appreciate you being cautious, that's certainly, certainly what you do, and we appreciate that. But, at the end of the day, if they know.
Mr. Craig, Mr. Gallagher, next.
As long as we, as the city, have the right to sell these two parcels. Okay, we have no liability, no any, any rights to that part in the middle.
I do not think we have any rights, and I don't think we should have any liability. Would someone try to bring us into a lawsuit and cause us to incur costs? It's possible, and I think we would be exonerated, but we wouldn't, you know, it could cost us a little bit of money.
But.
But we shouldn't have liability because.
But the parties involved know the consequences.
The current ones do.
The current ones, okay. Then if they purchase that, if we go ahead and move forward, and they, they purchase whoever gets the highest bid, okay? Then it becomes their responsibility.
It's buyer beware.
Okay, buyer beware.
Yes.
So then, in my mind, that's a business decision on the purchaser's decision to buy property that they know they could have some issues with.
Okay.
Right? Did that make sense?
Yes.
I mean, that, that's my thinking, is that it's, they're in a business, they've made a business decision to purchase some surplus property, okay? Knowing that it's not connected, okay? So if they wanna get the whole piece there, then they have to work through the railroad some way, somehow. And I'm okay with that, as long as they know that.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher?
Ash, could we require them to sign a hold harmless agreement?
I don't think so. They've already put in their bids, and those weren't conditions of the bids, and the bids have already been advertised for upset. But I, I think that buyer beware is an established principle of law, it's called caveat emptor.
And we've made it known, it's not something that's.
And we've, we've gone above and beyond trying to make sure everyone understands we don't have that right of way.
And we have documented that.
We have the actual recording of the committee meeting with Mr. Wisnig, and then we have the, the last council meeting where I went over it again. And now we have this, this committee meeting, and we will have video of this. We had Mr. Burkett taped just now at this meeting, so we, we have all those things at this point.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Curly?
That was the same question I had that Jim just asked.
Ash, what do we, it sounds like there's, you're, you're putting a lot of time in here. What's your estimate on, on what this may cost us in, in like personnel hours, or? I, I certainly don't want you to spend.
I know.
We're at the work.
Well, we're probably already beyond that point. I think the opening bid was five thousand, I think we're at five thousand, three forty-five, with, with my staff time and Mr. Bombardier drawing maps at his hourly rate. We're, we're probably at, we're probably at three thousand, five hundred dollars in staff time at this point already, in, in what we've been, you know, trying to investigate this and make sure that we don't own that right of way, because it was asserted that we do own that right of way. And so we went back and checked it twice because of the questions that were raised. But I would say we've probably spent thirty-five hundred dollars in staff. And, well, the advertising is usually reimbursed when we close.
Do you have any expectations of a lot more time being spent, or what is your feel on this?
Well, not now. I mean, if, if, if there's no motion to go with my recommendation and we just go through the upset bid process, whoever is the eventual high upset bidder, we will just do a closing with them. And we're not going to spend further time examining the title. I will tell my paralegal to pull off that project tomorrow, because I had her working from eighteen seventy-seven forward to see what she could find out, and I'll cool her, her jets on that tomorrow.
The year eighteen seventy-seven?
Yeah, that was the year Gastonia was incorporated, and that's the year the railroad came to town. So that's kinda where you have to begin to sort all of this out.
Just think how hard it is for GOTA.
For GOTA, yeah.
I'd make the motion that we continue with the upset bid process and sell the property.
Second, okay. Yes, sir, discussion?
Yeah, I would agree, because we have to recoup the corp, the costs that have already been incurred. So at this point, you know, otherwise, all that work would be for naught.
They've done the work, with, you guys are relieved of that duty, and let's just sell it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, raise your hand.
All right, and the only other thing I wanted to let the council know was that there was a lawsuit filed by the Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation, but it was helmed by the Southern Environmental Law Center against the DOT with regard to the Garden Parkway. And today Judge Conrad issued an order granting the DOT's request for a change of venue, moving it. moving it from the Western District of North Carolina to the Eastern District of North Carolina. The theory being that that will take some of the emotion out of it that may have occurred had it been tried here on this side of the state. And haven't finished reading Judge Conrad's order yet, but I would describe it as being not very favorable to the Southern Environmental Law Center in tone. So in that regard, that might be a small harbinger of good news for people who support the Garden Parkway. And I know there are different sides to that, but that's been followed closely, and that just was handed down this week, so I just wanted to let you all know about that. And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Interesting. Okay, City Managers' Report, Mr. Munn.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we get gifts at the time, and I passed out a copy to this. We received this last week. This is something that David Belk Cannon, folks, Gene Matthews in particular. Gene approached me a couple of years ago about wanting to make an improvement and donate some money to that area where the, that the city owns directly across the street from Lumberger Park, where the Christmas trees were sold for a number of years. It was always the city's plan to improve that parking lot and to have that in conjunction with the Greenway. We didn't have the money to do all that. It was a project to be done later on. Mr. Matthews has had this conversation back and forth, and last week he came in and said, "Here's a check for three hundred thousand dollars." So that, this will allow us to go forward with this project. There, I attached a drawing. There, and if you see, this is a conceptual plan, option five. There are actually seven options that are drawn. This was one that we like, but there are a lot of parts to this. We're going to work now and move to the next phase, which is actually some construction drawings. We'll work with Mr. Matthews and the foundation. And there may be some city dollars that come into this, but, you know, I would think that that would be a minor amount. And, but this is the, almost all of the, in fact, we could do a bare bones completely for less than this. But this actually, as you can see from the drawing, there's more than just a parking lot. It's a, it's done so that it complements the kind of development we have at Lumberger Park and at the Greenway. But it's a very generous gift. And because it's new money coming to the city, Melody reminds me that there actually should be a budget amendment. So if the council could vote to accept this and accept the revenue of three hundred thousand dollars.
Make sure to have that. Discussion, all in favor?
I think this is wonderful. I think this is great, and know the property well when you say Christmas tree lot. But it's, you said a little lot, it's in floodplain, is that right?
A small piece of it, yes. A lot of forest is in the floodplain.
Yeah. Mr. Gallagher is just jumping to find out what that is at the backside. Is that a sedimentation, or is that just bushes in this option five? I was just guessing with you.
Is that a jacuzzi?
Jacuzzi.
Oh, the, at the.
That little round pinto bean looking thing.
The kidney shaped?
Kidney, yeah.
Yeah. Rusty, I believe that that is a, it's a, an area where water would drain, but it also would have various plants.
Fancy rain garden, sort of a stormwater BNP.
Fancy.
Fancy rain garden.
I like that. It is jacuzzi, okay. Grant. FRG, fancy rain garden.
As we go through this, Your Honor, can we also do some type of a marker or a plaque that would denote, you know, would certainly want something, I don't know exactly what we'd want to put there yet, but certainly something denoting this wonderful donation and who did it and when, I think would be, would be real nice.
I think it's a great idea, and we will. Sometimes, most folks would like that, some don't.
Obviously, if he did not, but I think certainly, unless there were objections, I think that would be real nice to leave that for posterity as to who did that.
Well, if it's okay, I certainly would like to, well, when we approve it, if it's okay with everyone, write Gene back and thank him in behalf of the council and me. Okay, all in favor? Have we voted? All in favor, say it. Stand up, raise your hand. Okay, anything else, Mr. Munn?
Yes, we are, at the last city council meeting, the, not Lumberger Park, but actually the Lumberger family donated that property to us. And so what we're, what we're doing now is we have an interdepartmental task force that's taking a look at the property. The police chief told me, his folks just walked it the other day. We are, including the Shield Museum, utilities, engineering, planning, all of us looking at that property. We're going to assess what is there now, the condition of the creek, what is going on with the creek itself, the creek banks, the woods that's there, the, all the vegetation, if there are any, if wildlife and fish, all of that, to determine what is currently there. And then we're also going to talk about, well, what is it that we want to preserve? What is, what, how do we want this land to stay? And then who's responsible for that? Because we have a utilities department that does a mow through there for the stormwater utility, the downfall line. But we want to include, again, like I said, even the Shield Museum, so that what we do is do a really good nature preserve there. So in that, we're in the very beginning, trying to make sure that we do a good job with it. We're also looking at the possibility of maybe even some funding for stream maintenance, best practices along that stream, and best practices for the land that we have. Because it's such a prominent piece of property, it's in the backyard of Gardner Park. It's right there where everyone will see it. We know there is the potential for flooding, so there's just a lot of things going on there. And we're in the process first of understanding the property, then coming forward with recommendations, and then we'll actually put, get that information back to the city council so the council can approve the plan and go forward from there.
And if I could just add, Mr. Mayor. Council had made a motion to put a conservation easement on it. What we'd like to do is go through this process, come up with a plan, bring it back to you, and perhaps modify that motion at some point. Because normally when you give an easement, you give it to another entity like the Catawba Lands Conservancy, and they oftentimes require you to give them money in addition to the easement because they want money to maintain it. It may be that this plan that the staff will come up with is something that you're confident with, or we can give it to, say, the Shield Museum Board of Trustees Incorporated, which is a 501(c)(3). We can give them the easement, and then that gives us some certainty going forward that there will be an easement, it will be maintained. There is a 501(c)(3) that has that easement, but we still have a close enough relationship with that board of trustees that usually the interests of the city and the museum are the same going forward, and we won't have to come up with money to give the Catawba Lands Conservancy or some other agency.
Okay, yes, sir.
You know, we had done the stream restoration project at Lumberger Park many years ago.
And also up at, at Franklin Lake.
Right.
We did one up there too, yeah.
So, and I know we got water from the state, I guess, clean water, clean water funds, whatever. So, and you know, as much of an impact as DuHart Creek has by Gastonie Mall and all the properties on the north side of Franklin Boulevard, I think it'd be a great idea to do exactly what you're saying, do this environmental assessment, and then see if maybe we could, you know, obtain some funds to do a stream restoration. Because I know as it stands right now, the impact on it, you know, particular section of creek is going to continue to be great, and, you know, the erosion that's already there is going to just get worse over time. So it'd be great if we could mitigate that in some way.
Yes, sir.
There are two creeks there, right? One is New Hope, I think, and the other one runs into DuHart or so?
You have DuHart, which is the main, the southern side, and then you have drainage coming down from Franklin Square. So you, and then you also have drainage coming from the neighborhood. There's along back of Pamela.
Right.
That, so you have tributaries on both sides coming in to, to the, to DuHart. DuHart's the main spine in the southern, the southern edge of the property.
Now.
Oh, and I should mention that part of this too, we're in need to communicate with the surrounding property owners.
Right.
And because we own to the creek, they're with us on the other side of the creek, and, you know, so that's going to be part of the process too, and an ongoing process. Because the creeks change over time, you know, so we, and that land will change each season. So we need to be in communication with them.
So before you come back to the staff, before staff comes back to council, they will be in touch with the homeowners? Okay, good.
The only other thing I wanted to say is we are officially streaming tonight.
Officially what?
Streaming. Remember last time we experimented with it?
Oh, yeah.
Now we are actually doing streaming for sure, so we are streaming from now on. And that's all that I have, thank you.
This is a stream, not a creek.
City Council reports, Ms. Craig.
I have no report, Ms. Craig.
No report, just one quick note. The January fourteenth Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee meeting is going to be canceled. Those committee members will get notice of that tomorrow. But I want to get it out there, get it public as soon as possible because I know we've advertised that throughout downtown and other areas that we do meet once a month. So we want to give as much advance notice that that is canceled. We only had one small agenda item which we're just going to bring forward to the council without meeting. So that's canceled, that's my only thing, thanks.
Mr. Gallagher.
Is it off the city website, the streaming?
Yes. Yes, a link on.
Okay. No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Dr. Carroll.
No report. I just wanted to let you know I will be out of town for the next council meeting, so I request you're allowing me my absence.
We'll think about that.
Y'all can party without me.
We'll have a wonderful time.
There you go.
I can think of several things.
Bring it on, just go ahead and bring it on.
I'll read about it, okay, Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, sir. Ed, I only have one copy here, but with regard to what Mayor Protem Craig brought up about transportation, and I think it's an excellent point for our meeting. Central Atlantic Council of Governments is rolling out a skeleton of a regional freight mobility plan, which in fact, they are going to be contacting a lot of the local businesses. I only have one copy of the documents here. Can we have one for each council person for the meeting? I'll give you what I have, and I know that you can, the staff can order more directly from COG, and we can have what they've done thus far and what the, overall, where they want to go with this. And I think that would be informative. Secondly, Ed, can you tell us a little bit more about, we've had some questions about the leaf pickup, and I know that we didn't get a truck that we had ordered. Where are we with that?
Just a little bit of background. Each year we look at leaf season and try to do a better job. This year we actually added a place. We always took all our leaves to Duke Street. Now we have another western location on the backside of T. Jeffers Community Center. And we're using blackboard, and we're also tracking our trucks with GPS. We're doing a lot of stuff. But the problem is, it didn't increase the leaf pickup collection as fast as we would like, primarily because we had trucks break, a breakdown. We had three of them break down right during the heart of it all. And then the, we had a brand-new truck, a high-capacity leaf that was supposed to, truck that was supposed to be in just prior to leaf season. It didn't come in. It still, still isn't in yet, right? And in fact, when I talked to DeeDee earlier today, she, you know, she said, "Even if I had more people, I cannot pick up any more leaves." Our pinch point were the trucks. And the problems with the breakdown of the trucks and also the problem with that new truck not coming in. That, I mean, that appears to be kind of more the fundamental one. We're also going to have an after-action with DeeDee. Flip and I talked about that just today, where we're going to also assess all of it. Because the leaf pickup and also the yard waste, it's just not getting up as quickly in neighborhoods as we would like it to be. And so I think that there's a challenge there. And in fact, I don't know what's the council, the input that you folks have in your neighborhoods. It seems like we're not doing, I know the work and effort is there, but I don't, I don't think the impact, we're not taking it off the street as fast as we would like.
We're not meeting the expectations of the citizens.
Which is really the point.
I do know I had a comment that was given to me over in my area was that they really appreciated the blackboard notice because they got a call, said, "Leaf pickup will be next week," so they raked all the leaves to the curb, and it didn't happen. And they said, and it was probably because the truck broke down. But I think it's important, if we're going to do a blackboard call, to say, "Get your leaves to the curb. If we can't get there, a truck breaks down." These things happen, but we probably need a follow-up call saying, "Truck's not coming because this particular person was angry because it had killed all the grass in their front yard because the leaves sat out there for two weeks." And they said, "The only reason I didn't put them in bags and just throw them away was because the city said they were coming next week, so I did it and they never came." And then that's the only comment I've heard.
Yeah, we're going to have to come up with a different solution for next year. And, you know, I mean, it's always a function of money too. But we certainly don't like kind of where we are with this thing.
I only got one blackboard notice. And it was time, they called, break the leaves out there, they got them that week. But I haven't gotten one since, and my leaves have been sitting out there two weeks, which is fine because I got a whole bunch in the backyard, and I keep dragging them out. Next year, can we think about hiring like an outside crew also? One or two additional teams in order to do it by December thirty-first or so?
Yeah. Linda's here, do they do leaf pickup at Repub?
Yes, you do, right? And you're just expensive, right? Yeah, they do it, and, but.
They do yard waste.
Yeah, and remember two years ago, we did this, this experiment where you don't pick up yard waste as frequently? That's to allow more rapid leaf pickup. Well, you know.
Can't do it without the trucks.
Yeah, I know, so that's not, yeah. So now we have the yard waste and the leaf there.
Well, they did get the Christmas tree today, and they did get the yard waste, I mean, the limbs, so.
Still ahead, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay, the.
Well, I can ask it after, you mentioned the Christmas tree. I wanted to know, were they picking up just Christmas trees or Christmas tree and yard waste?
Today.
When they came around? Well, I was going to say, because I had a live tree, and I put it out, but I also had like just limbs that we had cut off the bottom of the tree. They're all just sitting there in the pile. They just grabbed the tree and went on, and I'm like, you missed everything. So I didn't know if it was, they were just getting trees that day, or there'll be yard waste pickup some other time? But I figured if they missed mine, they had to miss a lot more.
Yeah. You know, Flip, maybe you can, I think the Christmas trees and the yard waste both go to Duke Street. I don't know that we separate them, so I don't know. I would have, I would have thought that yard waste and Christmas trees would all be picked up at the same time.
But yard waste and the limbs that were cut off the bottom of the tree, they're still stacked right there, but they got the tree.
Yeah.
Ed, we haven't had an opportunity to discuss this because of the timing, and you didn't, you didn't bring it up, so maybe we don't have anything to discuss there. The visit from Secretary of Cultural Resources, former Susan Klutz, not our Susan Klutz, but Salisbury's Susan Klutz. That was tentatively set up for this coming Monday, and I wanted the council to know that. It's going to, they had picked where they wanted to be. This is in regards to the federal tax credits, which is.
State.
I mean, state, excuse me, state tax credits, which they're. I mean, state, excuse me, state tax credits, which they're, the, the mayors are trying really hard to, as you know, Lore and, and your old birthplace, they picked that and also Armstrong Apartments to take her to, and, but she's going to go around the state doing it. Have you heard back? Is that still scheduled for next Monday?
I believe it's still scheduled for Monday, and they're going to do the, the Armstrong Apartments and the, the Highland Memorial Apartments.
That's correct.
But we don't yet know...
You don't know the time?
Like whether it's the morning or the afternoon, or...
Okay.
As soon as we get it, we'll send a notice out to all, all city council.
Well, they're, they're going to want, they, they're going to get a lot of people from the media, from all over the state, because this is going to be, they're pushing hard to get this through, and I think the, I, I read somewhere, I believe today, the governor is very much for reinstating the state tax credit, so...
Historic tax credit.
Yeah, historic.
Historic tax credit, so, okay. I'd like to congratulate in closing, certainly the, wish the very best to the Panthers. They did a wonderful job. I didn't get to see, did, was Pittsburgh in the, were they, weren't they in the finals there? I didn't see that one.
You know, I pull for both teams, and, and you know, when they won last week, both of them, I had one shirt on, and then I put the other shirt on, you know, I have the, the both of them. So this last week, I, I didn't even launder them. I left the two just the way they were, and I'll put them back on just like that, because I thought that would be lucky.
Political answer, isn't it? Did you hear?